I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for allowing me the time. I know we have a busy, busy workshop and upcoming council meetings, so I'll try to get through both of the items. Let me try and share my screen here.
You know, I apologize for staffing. It always seems like we're dealing with your department, and it's too bad that we have to deal with this a lot.
Yeah, and it's really not just a North St. Paul thing, and I'll get into it briefly, but it's kind of agency-wide throughout the country. It's just a lot of agencies in very similar tough times. Everybody seeing the screen? So just to open it up, Police Executive Research Forum, they recognize that departments, both small and large, are experiencing these, the exact same difficulties that we are for hiring resignations and retirements. They're on the rise. And since 2017, Minnesota as a state, we've lost 14 law enforcement agencies. They've closed their doors just due to the resignations, retirements, and difficulties hiring that I just mentioned. The Associated Press also just noted that law enforcement is in the middle of a 25-year low for new officers entering the field. And locally, our community is growing. The demands on officers are growing. The demands on sergeants or administrative staff are also increasing, and when there's less people to do it, those demands just compound.
Chief, when you mention agencies, what do you mean? Are you saying police forces or...?
Police departments or sheriff's offices, yeah. 14 of them have closed since 2017.
Wow.
So tough, tough times. And that impacts everything. So staffing, if you don't achieve the proper staffing, it impacts budget, which you all are aware of. And then internally, it definitely impacts the morale, ability to train, the ability for anyone on our team to use vacation hours. And it impacts our own safety in order to keep each other safe, keep our community safe, and then retaining employees. Just due to the more work that comes when there's less people to do it, retention is definitely impacted. So recent history, since November of 2021, I've hired nine police officers, and I've also lost seven police officers due to resignations or terminations since December of 2021. So it has been a busy, ongoing hiring process the entire 15 months that I've been here. Some of the reasons that were mentioned in exit interviews, the profession is too stressful and dangerous. They're no longer interested in law enforcement as a career. The mental trauma and PTSD from working in law enforcement was to blame. The profession is not worth the stress arising from a lack of social support for law enforcement. One accepted a position in the private sector, which according to them pays more, has better benefits, and is significantly less stressful. And we also lost one who lateraled to a larger department with greater opportunities and different assignments and schedules, and also offers better benefits. So just the impact internally, the vacancies, as I mentioned, they are a hindrance to effective officer safety, morale, and the use of vacation and any other leave hours. You all have definitely seen the additional overtime spending that comes when we are short in order to backfill those shifts. And to be completely honest, if every single open shift had been taken on overtime, the overtime spending would be significantly more. There are many overtime shifts that go not filled just due to people not being available or interested in working more. So as bad as it is right now on the overtime budget, it could definitely be a lot worse just due to the vacancies that exist when we have lost folks. And then along with losing folks, it's the training. So the nine new hires, all of those new officers have been trained, and that puts a burden on the field training officers. So the ones that are required to train the new folks into every aspect of policing during their FTO process, that comes with additional overtime as well. So right now, it's kind of the predicament of running short, backfilling with overtime in order to allow for training, vacation use holiday, and suspense time use. So it's just this, it's not a fun situation to be in to try to determine whether or not somebody can go to training because then we'll be short. And then do we backfill for overtime? So it's very, very real, and it definitely has an impact when we're not able to keep staffing to where we need it to be. Just as a community, we're growing. Problems are growing with the population. I'm pretty proud about how much we're actually listening to the community. We've had community safety meetings. We've gone out a handful of times and had coffee around the community, and we're asking people what their thoughts are and how we can help them. Calls are becoming more violent. We've had two homicide investigations going on right now, 13 CSC investigations, 72 assaults, 11 weapon offenses, 59 officer responses to resistance. And each of these categories, they're all increased from this date in 2020 to 2021. So they're growing. Violent crime in general in Minnesota is also increasing. Aggravated assaults, robbery, rape, murder, all increased from 2020 to 2021. And just generally, the daily demands of and responsibilities of police officers, they're harder and more stressful than ever. There's a lot of pressure on cops these days, and those stressors are absolutely felt, especially when there's fewer people. And every single agency that I've talked to, they're all short. I haven't talked to another chief that said, "Yeah, we're fully staffed. We don't have a staffing issue going on right now." So we're all in the same boat. Everybody is hurting for finding new applicants. So it does just push the workload on the ones that are sticking around. And eventually, that is going to lead to more people burning out on the job, being unhappy, having some health issues, and rethinking their profession themselves. So moving forward, just big picture, we need more cops in the U.S., in Minnesota, and right here in North St. Paul to have a greater impact on reducing crime. In a research article for crime prevention, they pointed to the certainty of being caught is vastly more powerful deterrent than the punishment. And police deter crime by increasing the perception that criminals will be caught and punished. If we don't have the staffing to increase that perception and to actually live out the reality that we are catching people doing crimes, we're not able to impact the crime deterrent as much as I would like to. So currently, I'm trying to get support from Minnesota Chiefs of Police for a bill that would provide state funding to cover all employee healthcare costs for every single peace officer in Minnesota with single or family coverage. I think this would be a dramatic improvement to the crisis in retention recruitment as well as morale for every single officer in any agency throughout the state. I'm not a big fan of the, some of the ideas of the bonuses being offered. I would rather see us have some state support to step in and say, "We value police officers. We're going to take care of the healthcare costs." So that's something I'm definitely trying to get support for. Internally, we just need, we need some solutions to keep our officers safe, to keep our community safe, to keep our officers that are here, and to attract future officers. Put together some of the recruitment and retention strategies. I went on the post board and spent a decent amount of time because there are so many agencies on the Minnesota post board that are hiring right now. But I tried to summarize what most that I could find that are offering just different types of strategies for recruitment. Roseville, $5,000 for entry level, $10,000 for lateral police officers is being offered in their hiring process. Minneapolis PD, $7,000 in hiring after FTO and probation is completed. Edina PD, longevity pay after a handful of years, four, seven, 10, and 13. Hopkins PD, $5,000 for laterals. East Grand Forks, $5,000 hiring bonus, $2,500 for moving expenses. Centennial Lakes PD, $5,000 hiring bonus if you have three years of experience. Elk River is doing $3,000 in tuition reimbursement. Brooklyn Park, $5,000 for laterals, front end loading vacation time. Golden Valley, heavy on the PTO time, $3,000 after FTO is completed. $5,000 incentive after you complete three years. St. Cloud PD, they're jumping on to the healthcare, taking care of that for officers. So single insurance is fully paid by St. Cloud. Family insurance is 90% of the employer paid. Meeker County Sheriff's Office, $1,000 hiring bonus, full vacation bank upon hiring, and a student loan assistance program. U of M PD, $5,000 hiring bonus, 75% of tuition coverage likely at the U of M. Prairie Island PD, $5,000 hiring bonus. Laterals get $6,000. So different strategies. That's kind of on the local level, what's going on. There's more than that on the post board, but that's just a handful of the ones that are out there. On a national level, in Alabama, they are hiring 14 police, recently retired officers from that same agency to work as part-time police officers. And they're not paid benefits because they are only part-time employees, but they're helping fill the immediate needs of vacancies and shortages by getting some recently retired folks back in. San Francisco is doing the same thing for beat patrol officers. Sheriff's Office in Oklahoma, 100% paid employee healthcare. In Virginia, they're short 250 officers at an agency out there. They're doing the hiring of retired officers. And they also are implementing an online citizen reporting application. The state of Washington, they're offering $10,000 of retention bonus for each deputy and a $15,000 lateral bonus for laterals that come in. So just trying to take some of those things and then thinking a little outside the box, I would absolutely support anything along the lines of paying for our police department employees for their healthcare. This was one that recently came up, $1,000 annual mental health spending allowance that any member of the police department could use with some parameters around it, whether it's towards a gym membership or some kind of medical care, anything that helps their mental health, mental or physical health, to let them spend that money to let them know that we value them and their mental health. And we're going to take care of whatever it is because at the end of the day, everybody's different. So what works for one person to help their mental health might not work for another person. So this is a way to say, here's a little freedom with some parameters around, you know, what that might actually be for approved within that spending. But I would strongly support the mental health spending allowance, creating that. I think that would absolutely help the retention going forward. Tuition reimbursement, hiring part-time officers, recently retired, would be a major benefit too. So if we have injuries, and they're going to be out for several months, which we currently do, then if we're able to call a recently retired officer from here or any agency around in Ramsey County that is willing to come back, they have the training, they have, and they're still, their post license is still activated. Getting them to come back in to help fill the gaps would offer a lot of benefits and definitely help out the budget because then we're not backfilling with overtime and hurting even more. Longevity pay increases at five, 10, 15, and 20 years. Your ongoing support, this council has been great with supporting our officers and just knowing how much that actually means. It is, it's a recruitment and retention strategy in and of itself because officers appreciate working for cities and sheriff's offices where the elected leaders are supportive of them and their profession. So definitely continuing that and then ultimately getting more officers and investigators on our team. Not asking for any kind of vote, obviously, this is a workshop setting, but just trying to shine some light on things that we have going on and some things that I'd like to have us start thinking about in the future when it comes to retention and recruitment. Happy to answer any questions.
Again, I'm sorry we're in this predicament. And, you know, the last two years have been very, the narrative has not been very good for police officers. But I think that our council, you know, and our city definitely supports our police department. So I think we have that going for us. You know, we have a council and community that really supports having our own police force. And so I think that adds a lot. But I was at the regional council of mayors the other day, and this narrative is being said by every mayor out there. We did have a representative from the Walls, from Governor Walls there. And evidently, that is going to be one of their initiatives for this year is to help with cities with their police force. I mean, that was said at that meeting. So that's good news. You know, hopefully, that's out there and it's coming down the pipeline. That what you've said, not only with our city, cities surrounding us, other states, you know, we're all fighting the same battle to try to recruit, you know, people into the law enforcement. And it's difficult. You hired nine people and seven resigned. That says a lot right there. That's the narrative. It just is not, is not good right now. So to keep those seven, how do we keep those seven people? You know, if they, from, you know, keep them from resigning. And I think that's what we got to figure out, you know. So, I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, you're going to have a whole new council here in another month. But I think, you know, as much as we can do to keep that narrative, positive narrative going, not from, not only from here but to the next council to help with some sort of, what is it going to take? You know, is it going to be having meetings? And what can we do? You know, you see this $5,000 bonus out there. Is that really helping? You know, is that really making a big impact? Or is it something bigger than that? Is it something that we need to do to change that narrative that we are a safe community? You know, we have a great police chief. We have a great police force. You know, they love working within the city because they have the support from all of us. How can we, you know, keep those recruitments coming and stay in here? So that, I guess that's, you know, my take is, how do we keep them here? Is it just money? I don't think that's it because that's the same narrative. We're all fighting for the same police officers. Everyone's fighting to get, you know, good, good police officers within all the cities around us, so.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I appreciate the support. And yeah, like you said, I don't think it is that benefit. You know, law enforcement attracts people that have a big heart of service. And I don't think it's the motivation via signing bonus that is going to make people say, you know what? You know, I'm going to take this one because it's $1,000 more than this other agency. And nor is, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's the strategy that we really want as a profession to say, you know, come over here. We're giving you a bunch of money to come in the door. But, you know, along the spending allowance and the proper staffing and the support and healthcare coverage and, yeah, happy to.
And I think that's one thing they mentioned too is healthcare at that meeting. That was one of the things that the governor's aide had mentioned, something about healthcare.
That's fantastic to hear if there's already support for it. Absolutely.
That's a number person?
Yeah, well, I mean, I appreciate your presentation. I think you kind of outlined the reality that your industry finds itself in and the struggle that we locally are having, you know. We've approved and budgeted 19 spots. We're asking you to fill those, and you're telling us the difficulties that you're experiencing here. And so some of the things, I agree, you know, this is going to be, the next council's going to be dealing with this. But I think, you know, to the question, what can we do right now? I think there are things we can do right now. One of them being, you had forwarded Sheriff Fletcher's letter to the state legislature saying, "Hey, call a special session. We need to deal with this now." That's something we could all do. I already did, copied our, you know, senator and state rep and encouraged them to say, hey, you know, call for this and get it into action. But obviously, now, things after the election, hopefully, they will make that a priority and address that. And so some of these things may, you know, get some financial help from that. But also, you talked about your initiative to start this statewide healthcare coverage. I think between now and the end of the year, we got two more meetings. We could possibly have a city resolution supporting that, and we can approve it as a council and forward that on to these individuals. Because I think in the past, Senator Uyghur and Representative Lilly has stated, you know, anytime you're trying to do something, if you can get a resolution as a city, it's in like an official document, and they can use that to push their bills through or whatever, to show that there's local support. So encouraging us to do that, that could be something we could do. I'm just curious, you know, like you said, we're kind of fighting for the same limited hiring pool. Of those nine officers that you hired since you were here, how many were, the term is lateral transfer, but for those who may not understand, it's an officer, an already sworn officer from another, either sheriff's department or police department coming on and working here. How many of those have we hired?
I think there was four of that nine.
And have any of those four been ones that have resigned or left?
One of them did resign, yeah.
So, you know, and I agree, it kind of sucks to just say, hey, let's throw some money out there. And this isn't really a job where, you know, the issues you're facing are more than money. But if we're not doing it and other communities are, we're putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage. So to answer the question, does it work or not? Maybe it works for other communities, maybe it doesn't. I don't think we can definitively say it does or it doesn't here unless we try it. And so you outlined the negative impacts short staffing can have in a variety of different ways. I would be full support in saying, let's try offering that bonus incentive. Because I would imagine that would be more highly targeted towards those lateral transfers. And in speaking to some colleagues in other cities, councils, council members in other cities, they've heard that there potentially will be a large influx of that lateral transfer activity in larger cities like Minneapolis and larger sheriff's departments like the Hennepin County Sheriff's Department so that, you know, potentially you could see a lot of that type of activity. And, you know, just two to kind of market North St. Paul is we are a different city. And you would think, you know, and it seems like in the past, before what has transpired in the last three years, we struggled to maintain officers here because we're only so big, and we can only offer so many opportunities. Whereas officers that work at a larger city can get into other things or like the county and all the different things they have. So we would lose, we would, you know, we're kind of like the farm system, if you will, for lack of a better term, not trying to make a disparaging comment about our officers, but we would hire new officers, train them here, they go through everything. They're here for four or five years, and then they're off to St. Paul or Minneapolis or Hennepin County or wherever. And that's a struggle that we've always had. So what, you would think now there may be some desire for officers to get out of those environments or in cities that aren't as supportive of their police departments and come here to show like, hey, we support the police here. The council's got full of support. The community has full support. We may not have K-9 units and all these other things, but what we do have is something that's attractive because it is maybe a little less stressful than what you're dealing with or can deal with in other cities. So maybe there's some, you know, some angle there that we can kind of present why it's more beneficial to work in North St. Paul. But the, I'd be cautious about these labeling, some of these incentives, like you're saying, the $1,000 wellness. And the reason why is, I mean, I, again, I support the idea, but the problem is on our side, we got to look at it differently because we're, as you're aware, we're dealing with unions. I think there's four different unions within the police department, correct? There's the sergeants, oh, it's three? Well, the chief would fall under that fourth. So there's the patrol officers, the sergeants, and then the chief. Okay, so there's three different unions. Anytime we make a change, that deals with unions and impacts all the unions, the Public Works Union and all that. So we need to look at that as it may be a good thing to do for the police department and for the reasons we're talking about. But then it has an unintended consequence with now we're going to renegotiate with the Public Works Union. They're saying, well, look what you gave them. You got to give that to us. So it could, you know, kind of bust the budget down the road, you know, not that $1,000, which you're, so I, you know, that's where, if we were to go that route, I think it would be more beneficial to just say, we're offering this bonus, and we're not putting strings to it. You know, and the fact that, again, we have a facility here where people can work out free of charge. I don't know if other cities have that. So things like that, I think, you know, are things that we can do immediately. Some of this other stuff, I think, is more long-term. But, you know, I think a resolution supporting that healthcare bill, if we could do that, if we can't do it in December, maybe get that on the docket for the new council to do. I don't see why anyone would not, it doesn't cost any money. And then looking at those, those hiring bonuses, because, you know, you're basically saying right now we're short, is it eight officers?
No, we're short two right now, two full-time. We have two officers either out on injury or on light duty right now, but.
Okay, I misread your email then. I thought you said you're currently dealing with 11 officers, but.
No, thankfully, it's just two.
All right. Well, I was going to say, holy cow, but. All right, well, I mean, I would be full support of a bonus incentive to track those lateral transfers. I think that's obviously, I would think, who you target first, just because it's not as intensive, time-consuming to train someone, even though they're still dealing with some training. And then, yeah, encouraging the council to, you know, reach out to state senators and representatives to have them support the, you know, the special session, which probably isn't going to happen, or just looking at what you're proposing, that legislative healthcare, whatever they call it, healthcare coverage for police officers, yeah.
Appreciate it, yeah.
It wasn't that long ago we cheered when you were fully staffed.
I know.
I think we were all incredibly excited when that actually happened. I, from your opening comments, I kind of kept a tally. And I don't want to say, I was happy with the reasons for leaving, but the fact that of those who departed, one jumped for greater opportunity, greater promotion, greater pay. It wasn't everybody. So, I mean, to me anyways, I read into the fact that we're, from a pay standpoint, we've got to be somewhat competitive. I don't know if that's a fair statement or not, but I think that we're probably somewhat competitive. I immediately go to, what tools do you, what tools do you need that you don't have today from the, you know, from the list that you gave us that will help get people here and retain people? You know, I mean, in my notes, I put down finder fee. Do you have anybody, any current officers right now who have friends that may not be happy with they are? Do we offer something internally from a, from a finder fee that both parties can, can benefit from? Longevity pay, I like that. Do, don't we have that, do we, we have one level of longevity pay now, right? And what, is that at ten years?
It's one and a half percent at, was that ten years, I believe? Is that ten or fifteen years? Do you remember, Dan? Ten?
I love the idea of, of finding recently or currently, you know, current retired officers that are out there. Both Minneapolis and St. Paul have lost a lot. Have had a lot of retire, have had a lot of officers retire. I think that's great. That's potentially some, some untapped market that's available. So you've got my support in figuring this out because we celebrated it and we were happy about it when you were fully staffed. We want to get you back there as quickly as we can. I did have one question, you know, you've read and, and heard you loud and clear when we talked about this last year and et cetera. But because your current officers are taking additional shifts and additional duties, we know that, I'm assuming that their vacation is probably building up and then...
I didn't understand that.
I didn't understand.
That, that the vacation probably is kind of maybe not as bad as it was last year, but are you finding that you've got a lot of officers that aren't able to use their current vacation? And do we need to take a look at doing something like we did last year where I think we paid out a percentage or paid out all of the unused vacation?
We might. We're, that's something that we're definitely aware of this year. So, but it just, it's, it's been harder to even do that because now we're already short. But we're very, we're, we're really trying to make sure that people are using their vacation. So we're just not looking at the numbers entirely, but just knowing that every single sergeant has been very aware of, of each officer trying to use those hours. I think we're in a lot better situation than we were last year, but there, there might be an officer or two that does run into an excess of hours.
Because I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that too. And from a retention standpoint, you know, please bring that back to, to council because I would fully support, again, this year, what we did last year.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other than that, I don't have anything, other than the fact that several of the, several of the candidates left due to stress. I would certainly hope that in the vetting process, bringing somebody on board, that that is addressed and talked about and they know what they're signing up for. That's, that's, it's kind of, it's kind of sad.
It's tough. That is, that's one of the questions in my final interview, just how, how stress is handled. And unfortunately, I, I saw it at the county. I had a lot of really close friends who, who just left the profession entirely over the past two years, so... But trying to, yeah, absolutely trying to ask questions to see if that can be recognized in the hiring process. But then even, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of the ones that come to me and say, you know, I've had enough of law enforcement and I'm, I'm still supportive of them. As much as it hurts to lose an employee, I, you know, want them to be happy with life going forward, so...
And that's not North St. Paul. That's just everywhere.
That's everywhere, yeah, just losing officers.
It's not them coming in and, you know, it's, it's the narrative right now is what they're, they're dealing with.
Yeah.
So with that said, you know, I, I, you know, you have, I think you have all our support, you know? How do we, how do we figure this out? And I, and it is, I think it's, you gotta think outside the box. You know, you really gotta understand where the stress is coming. How do you, how do you eliminate that stress? You know, how can we, how can we help you? Do we pay for a vacation? Do we, you know, I don't know. I mean, those are things that, you know, we need to do things that will eliminate some of that stress and change that narrative. And that narrative's gotta be changed, not just here in the city, it's gotta be changed all over the place. I don't know what the, what the numbers are for new recruits in, in the academy at all. Is it, is it way down? Is it coming up now? I mean, are they seeing people coming in or is it still?
It's still pretty low. I, I got numbers recently for the amount of people that had successfully passed the post-test. And last year was very low. And this year, there was a few more that had successfully passed it. But I'll take that, you know, if it's increasing, that's good, better than continuing the slide downward, so...
The demand is so high in that the people coming in is so low that everyone's fighting for these new recruits.
Right.
Kerry? Councilmember Wong?
Hi, everyone. I apologize that I can't be there today. I want to thank you Chief Babenroth for your presentation. Had really great data and I really appreciated your focus on mental health. I think that's something that I have consistently seen you advocate for, for your team and really, really appreciate that. Similar to Councilmember Cole, I'm, I think that the retirees may be a really great opportunity for us to explore. I also am interested to look at maybe potentially longevity pay when we look at the long-term. And I'm just wondering, in terms of staffing, I know that obviously police officers make up a police force. And I also know that Maplewood is exploring mental health providers as part of the team. And it looks like, based off of your presentation, that mental health was something that was coming up in the community. And just wondering what your thoughts are in regards to that approach.
I think it's a great idea. Would love to have some mental health professionals on staff with us. Definitely not in replacement of any of the officers, but in addition to, we would absolutely appreciate. We reach out to crisis a lot and they're very helpful when they're available. And, and that means, you know, they can send somebody out in a reasonable amount of time, which when we need them now in whatever situation we're in, an hour to two hours just isn't reasonable for us to help that situation out. So if we had some in-house mental health professionals, I would absolutely support that. Unfortunately, you know, I think there's debates that go on in, in other cities about whether or not that can reduce the amount of officers with the levels of crime that are, we have and just the, the violence that's going on, you know? It, 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 there wouldn't be a savings. It wouldn't be able to say now we don't need, you know, two more cops next year or, or whatever it is because we have these mental health professionals. But it would absolutely, absolutely be a, another helpful piece of, of our police department if we had some in-house mental health professionals helping us out and even doing the follow-up. You know, a lot of times we'll, we'll go to a call involving somebody having a mental health crisis, but then it's the, however that situation is involved, is resolved in the immediate. It's, it's the, well, we don't have the time to call them two weeks later to say, hey, how's it going? How, did that treatment, did, you know, your trip to the hospital, did that help you? Do you still need help? So having that professional that's there to, to make that ongoing contact and check in with them, it's fantastic. I would absolutely love to have that. It's a great idea.
Councilmember Peterson?
I think you've really developed a good culture. I've heard some great things about your officers. I mean, you handled that situation a couple of weeks ago, you know, top-notch. I would agree with Councilmember Thorson about, you know, reaching out to our officials, our newly elected officials on, you know, getting a resolution. And, yeah, it, it's, it's a tough nut to crack. I get that, you know? But I think we offer, we have a little bit more to offer, I think, than other, other police departments. I've checked around and talked to other council people. But all I can do is I wish you good luck and whatever we can do, we'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I appreciate the support as always.
One other question, the part-time angle, if, if, is that something that would be exclusively offered to just retired offers, officers? Or would you open that up to even, you know, like say if there was someone who lived in North St. Paul or Maplewood or Oakdale that worked at another jurisdiction but potentially wanted to work here part-time? Is that something you'd open up to current officers in other jurisdictions? Or is there some rules against that or?
I'm, I'm not sure. I haven't, I'm not sure of any rule against that. I'm not, just not sure on what that would, on the realities of what that would look like for their availability. If, if their department, their home department is, is short-staffed and asking more as most departments are, their availability on picking up additional shifts, I don't know if it would be there. So I think as far as openings and who would be available to pick up shifts on a, you know, a day or two's notice, I think retirees would be our best market. But definitely open it up to retirees from, you know, agencies around the metro or when just put a parameter on must be a North St. Paul retiree just to try to broaden the, the pool of potential interest there.
So, great presentation. I know this is a bigger picture item, you know, for, for you, for us, for the surrounding communities. You're also working with County Attorney Choi in regards to a lot of the violent crimes that are going on out there with juvenile, juveniles. And how we, is it the race, race score? Is that how they determine that? We're trying to figure that out because there's a lot of minors out there who are committing the crimes who are not, you're not able to put them into some sort of care. Maybe you wanted to just mention that a little bit, that there is things that are going in the background with a lot of these crimes that are being committed by the same individuals. Is it helping? Is, are we, are we going in the right direction? It's a long process?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a lot of conversations about the juvenile crime issue. We're in a bad place with, with the amount of juvenile crime. And that ultimately feeds into the retention and recruitment problems for asking the same officers to go to the same incident, you know, a couple of days apart from kids committing some violent, terrible crime. And then we have them arrested safely and take them to the JDC. And then if they're, the system, there's no resources available, they're not detained. And then we meet the same kids four days later after we just thankfully, safely arrested them for a similar crime not too long ago. You know, that's a problem. Officers don't want to have to get lucky going through the same arrest. And, you know, for their own safety, for the safety of community, having, having to do that over and over again, that is frustrating and that is absolutely stressful to safely make it through once an incident of whatever the crime is and then to have to meet the same exact crime and the same suspects very shortly after because the juvenile justice system is the way it is right now. That, that pushes officers away from this job. And it, and it increases just the risk to the public right now when it comes to violent juvenile crime. So, yeah, working on that in the, in the background and not so much, yeah, not even really background, that's, that's another, that's on the burner for sure.
We do have Police Civil Service here. Dave, thank you for being here. You know, I think it's gonna take a team effort from, you know, the council, from Police Civil Service with the police department. You have our support. We can do these resolutions, you know, if that's gonna help, you know, at least in the short term, get those out there showing that, you know, City of North St. Paul, we support our police. We need help. We need help from, from you out there. We need help, you need help with trying to talk, talking to Choi and all that so that... There's gotta be a solution, you know? We gotta change that narrative.
I appreciate, appreciate your support. Definitely, all, everyone.
And I think there are other, you know, I think there's, there's things outside of the box that we can think of that possibly could help, you know, at least help in some, some little way.
I agree. Moving to drone program, I was told they only had forty minutes.
We'll just give, we'll just give you guys all drones and...
Say, you know, I think that's not a bad idea.
Before you move on to that, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead.
I just want to take a moment to just thank Chief Babenroth for just the incredible work that they did and him and his team and department, the way they followed up on such a stressful situation. And I was talking to him on the phone, I could hear two other people trying to talk to him at the same time and his follow-up, making sure that his team was taken care of, also the victims of the scene and his, even his follow-up after the fact and with the families. And he just did a spectacular job and your dedication and how you feel towards your officers just really shined through and you're just a real asset. So really appreciate your good work.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for saying that. We definitely had a, it was definitely a team, team response, multiple agencies and, yeah, a lot, a lot of great police work and collaboration on that one. But thanks for saying that.
You know, Chief, would it be beneficial to have like a little committee put together to talk about outside the box? How can we, you know, get people thinking, how can we help the police department? Could be with Police Civil Service, you know, a couple of council members and, you know, at least showing that we want to, we want to keep it going. We want to keep thinking about how can we help.
I think that's a great idea, yeah. I think all, all the input and ideas, the more the better.
Because I'm thinking things, there's things in the city here that we're able to possibly provide. You know, we've got chiropractors in the cities. We got, I mean, just...
Yep.
Those are just little things that might help.
Absolutely, yeah.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Dave McKenzie on the Civil Service Commission. Just want to wonder, what would it take, you guys have the connections in the city, to at least buy the officers a meal at a certain time whenever they have chance, like at one of the local restaurants, to give us, give them their support from the community as we say thank you?
So Dave, I think that's a great idea. You know, we did a picnic, the council cooked at the picnic. We bought the hamburgers and everything. We served them.
Right.
But I think those are the things, you know, if it's a picnic, if it's taking them out for dinner, if it's getting chiropractor here, massage here, it's, those things all put together could add up to a lot of good things for the police department.
I'm thinking, do you think Max, North St. Paul, would donate enough food on these officers that are on duty or whether they can come in on an off-duty day to have a lunch? That would be phenomenal, that they're appreciated for everything they do.
Right.
They've got, we've got four commissioners. They're quite dedicated to the city and we look for the best possible candidates in the interviews that we do do. And we have gotten one fabulous transfer that we are elated to have for the information that he has brought to this community from the city of Minneapolis.
Who's that? Oh, oh, sorry.
I'll tell you what, he, he turned our heads when he prevent, presented that information.
Yep.
You know, and all of us sat home watching the Minneapolis burn. Well, guys like them were out there those nights. They didn't know which way to go. They had to call for every second. We're into that same boat. If you guys can find some money to put on besides the two, I'd love to have two or three more. I'd love to have two or three more and even if they come in as a part-time, but offer them the full-time benefits and as we work through this to keep our, our officers, the more appreciated that they are, the more they're going to, they're going to stay.
So you're part of that committee?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Are you part of that committee?
I would be.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because those are the things that we want?
We have one of the best chiefs I've ever worked with. The other chief we had was a little bit lack on his communication. This guy right here.
Don't want to tell him that too many.
Well, I know. Well, I saw him this morning taking his children to school. I didn't even know who he was. He looked just like a regular human being. So that's all I have to say, but I'll tell you what, if we can work out a plan, one of the, maybe it could be at the VFW or the Legion, wherever.
Yep.
I would love to be able to have these guys appreciated. We could even get maybe a little hamburger stand.
Bringing all these ideas out as that committee should be.
Well, I, well, I'm the helpful kind of guy. I help a lot of people out.
You do. I know you do.
And I would just love to be able to sit down with some of the cops that we've hired and talk to them.
Yep.
That's what it's all about, giving them the benefit. Those guys work some long hours at night and you listen, I watched that Fletcher Show live on PD on Remsen County. All you hear are shots fired, shots fired. What's coming here?
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
So I think having, you know, having that committee would be, you know, having Dave on there and having, you know, a council member and, you know, some, maybe some residents. Let's keep it moving forward. Let's get, let's get these ideas out there and be able to show that we care and keep moving it forward. If that helps, makes sense.
Absolutely. Yeah, be great. Thanks a lot, Dave, for your, your positive comments. I appreciate it.
So drone.
Drone, drone, switching gears. Roll right into it.
Roll right into it.
Okay. So kind of put this together with Sergeant Batawich has helped, just trying to just be as transparent about the drone program as possible and, and it just, I think there's a lot of unknowns with, hopefully we're trying to reduce those unknowns with a couple of slides here. So just the general, what's an unmanned aerial vehicle? Well, that's the fancy word for a drone or a UAV for short. Small aircraft without a pilot, crew or passenger onboard. In order to operate one, all of the following components are required. Ground-based controller, human operator or pilot, and the internal technology system to allow the controller to communicate with the UAV or drone. What does one look like? That picture right there is very similar to the version that we're, we are hoping to get. All those little components are different things. There ones, speaker, lights. I don't know if you can see my pointer. Yeah, there we go. That's a battery pack for it. This is a charging kit. These are the propellers for them and various cords to make all of the technology work. And that's the controller for it. So just to, it's nice having a picture so you can actually see it. What are the capabilities? The model's available for public. So that's, I think, an important thing to make. It's not some high, high top-secret law enforcement technology. This is, anybody can go out and buy this drone. It's, yeah, it's, it is what it is. It's a, it's a public version of a drone. A little fancier than just your one from the average supermarket, but it's, it's definitely available for public purchase. It gets you about 30 minutes of suspended flight time. It has two cameras capable of thermal imaging. So what are we planning on using them for? Public safety emergencies between us and the fire department, training. We need to make sure we know how to actually fly them so we're not running them into buildings and crashing them or, you know, having them just fall out of the sky. So definitely. Not out, can't, we actually did find a drone on top of the snowman not too long ago. Was not our drone though. We don't have them yet, but yeah. Crash reconstruction, crime scene documentation, really the main thing, finding missing people, whether it's a suspect or somebody that walks away and is a vulnerable adult. That is really the, one of the most prominent uses that I see coming for us. There are occasionally, there, there might be, if you, if you get a judge to sign a warrant for some immediate investigation use, that is also an option. Searching for fugitives and definitely along the community engagement wise, it gives us a cool toy to show kids and community members, you know, this is what our drones look like. So it'd be a pretty fun community engagement element to it.
I'm just thinking the car show, would that be something that potentially could be used for?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a handful. We'll, we'll get into them there, but there's a handful of uses that we're, we're only authorized to, to deploy them on. But if it is a community engagement type thing at, at the car show, then, and there wasn't, or if there is a known safety risk to it, then that could be another reason. But yeah, that's a good opportunity to, to get out there and engage the community. What we're not planning on using them for, and we're not allowed to use them for, to conduct random surveillance activities to target a person based solely on actual perceived characteristics such as race, ethnicity, national origin, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, economic status, age, cultural group or disability, to harass, intimidate or discriminate against any individual or group to conduct personal business of any type. And we cannot intentionally record or transmit images of any location where a person would have reasonable expectation of privacy. For example, they're inside their house, in their, in their yard or, or their enclosure. Operators and observers have to take reasonable precautions to avoid even inadvertently recording or transmitting images where there is this reasonable expectation of privacy. You can't put a weapon on them. Not planning to do that. We're not going to deploy them with facial recognition or biometric matching technology. This per state statute. And unless authorized by a warrant or for purposes permitted in this policy, a UAV should not be used to collect data on public protests or demonstrations. So what are the nine authorized uses? So state statute, word for word, 626 dot 19 is the use of unmanned aerial vehicle statutes. It gave us, or any law enforcement agency, these nine reasons for warrantless use of drones. So first one during or in the aftermath of an emergency situation that involves the risk of death or bodily harm to a person over a public event where there's a heightened risk of, risk to safety of participants or bystanders, to counter the risk of a terroristic, terroristic attack, to prevent the loss of life and property in natural or man-made disasters, to conduct a threat assessment in anticipation of a specific event, to collect information from a public area if there's reasonable suspicion of criminal activity, to collect information for crash reconstruction purposes, for training or public relations purposes, or for purposes unrelated to law enforcement at the request of a government entity, provided that the government entity makes the request in writing. So those are the, the nine authorized uses per state statute that every single law enforcement agency operating in drone program has to abide by. So additional oversight, by January 15th of each year, we have to, if we get a drone program, we have to report to the Commissioner of Public Safety information from the prior calendar year, the number of times that the drone was deployed without a search warrant, including the date of the deployment. And of those nine warrantless reasons, we have to enter in that code each time for whatever our deployment was. We have to submit that information to the BCA. We also have myself and Sergeant Batawich will be overseeing the entire program and authorizing drone deployments and then our own policy, policy 606. So additional oversight, drones are pretty heavy, they're regulated by the feds and the state. MINDOT is the state level agency control, which controls drones. We have to register them with the Minnesota Department of Transportation and the FAA is, is the federal oversight. And we have to operate under the small aircraft rule, which requires that our pilots must obtain a remote pilot certificate, which is a pretty intense class. That requires a lot of hours of studying. Actually, in order to pass the test, we have to register our drones with the FAA and then our pilots do have to comply with the flight restrictions in part 107 or any waivers that we might obtain from the FAA for flying them. Couple more slides, just as there are rules on the road for driving your car, there are rules in the sky when flying a drone. So what some of those FAA part 107 rules are, always avoiding any manned aircraft, never operating in a careless or reckless manner, keeping your drone within your line of sight. You can't be a pilot and a visual observer for more than one drone at the same time. Not flying your drone over people unless they are directly participating in the operation. Not operating your drone from a moving vehicle or aircraft. And then the maximum height, unless you have a FAA waiver, is 400 feet above ground level or 400 feet above a structure. And the maximum speed is 100 miles an hour, which these drones that we're looking at do not come close to getting to 100 miles an hour.
Do you know how high it is? So is, is there always a height on?
Yep, so this.
If you're under that 400.
Yeah, yeah, your screen tells you exactly how, how high you are.
Sure.
Program costs, pretty important. So the initial cost for two drones, the pilot training, the additional batteries and the propeller guards is $19,306, $306 and 0.06. And then annually it's $6,200 and 16 cents. And the annual costs cover the pilot data license. I talked to Axon a lot to really fine tune on what we are actually getting from, from the annual fees because it's not, I mean, that's, it's not a small number. So it's all of the fees for the pilots in order to access the data that anytime that they're flying, it records. And that's, it's how the, the pilots tap into that system. And then we actually, we have to get a license for each drone and that is what provides the live stream, streaming capability and the program management functionality. So those are the costs. Just some data on 2021. So 76 law enforcement agencies in Minnesota reported using drones for a total of 2,265 deployments last year. The most common used reason code, 46% of the time or 1,042 deployments was for training or public relations purposes. So that's, that is the number one reason why law enforcement agencies, at least in 2021, had been flying drones was for training or public relations purposes. So other agencies are definitely seeing the, the benefit from, from a community engagement standpoint for, for drones. The second most used reason code, or 23% of the time, 512 deployments, was during or in the aftermath of an emergency situation involving risk of death or bodily harm to a person. And the third most used reason was to collect information for crash reconstruction purposes after a serious or deadly collision on the road. So our, our intentions are exactly the same as, as I guarantee will, will be very similar, if not exactly similar, to the, the top three reason codes in 2021 from other law enforcement agencies. We want to fly drones to train, to build relationships at community events, to find missing people or fugitive suspects, to document crime scenes and accidents and to enhance the efficiency of the public safety that we're delivering in our community and also to reduce the potential for use of force. If we can spot a suspect 20 yards away in a field from where our officers are on the ground looking for them and then we know exactly where that suspect is and we're able to call out to them instead of just be surprised by us stumbling on them, the potential for, for that being a situation that now doesn't need the use of force dramatically increases when we have a drone telling us exactly where the person we're looking for is. So yeah, that's, that's the, did I forget anything?
You've been kind of quiet there. You've got to add something to it.
Chief nailed it all. The chief nailed it all. I, I got nothing else to add.
Well, I appreciate both of you. That's, Councilmember Peterson.
When do you anticipate getting this drone?
Sometime in January, as long as our policy is, is approved by the council.
Looks good. Oh, we're getting. Councilmember Wong has a question.
Hi there. Thanks again for the presentation. Appreciate you putting in the policies that the state has as well. I do have a few questions and this is more of a matter of public perception and, and, and community, building community trust. So this may be, what you're presenting may be the facts, but how do you intend to build relationships with folks who are concerned about surveillance and, you know, maybe potentially their violation of civil rights?
Well, I, we opened it up for public comment. We received three public comments. I reached out to the folks that actually had questions about the drone program that were very similar to what you just said. They're, you know, just questioning the nature and intentions of the program. And after their response that I gave them, they replied that they were the police department's biggest fan. So I think we, we were able to convince one that there's no negative intentions for our police department's use of drones and there's no intention of, you know, spying or, or Big Brother watching folks. It is truly a public safety enhancement program that we're hoping to bring to us. But happy to just answer any questions anytime. I mean, I, if there's anybody that ever questions them, I, I encourage them to reach out and they can come see the drones and, and see how they work. And, you know, we're going to be transparent as the statute requires us to with the, the data on how, how we're using them, but happy to, to answer any, any questions from anybody.
Great, thank you. I, I can anticipate that there may be, for those that have not seen any or have not reached out, that there may be a large part of the community that is still unaware. And so I'm just anticipating that there may be more need for education or outreach in that regard. I do have some other questions as well. You have noted that of the second and the third reason these drones are deployed, how often has our department seen these types of calls in which we would deploy a drone?
I don't have a firm number a lot for, unfortunately, well, not, I mean, it's emergency situations that are on a larger scale. Lately, there's been more than I want, that's for sure. But what, you know, it's any situation that is going to benefit from the use of a drone. So if, if the incident is, there's no information that the incident is traveling further than the immediate scene, then there's no benefit to deploying a drone because everything that we, it's, it's all contained. So therefore, we wouldn't be in the situation where a drone is going to be deployed. Crash reconstruction, we've had a couple dangerous and. and recently a deadly crash, so, yeah, several incidents.
Great, thank you for that. It just is helpful to see, you know, a little bit more of the context in which deployment may happen here versus on a statewide level, so I'm just trying to understand more contextually here.
Sure.
And then I do have another question in regards to the administration time and staff time allocated to this. Is this something that is going to be time, I mean, time consuming for, for officers in terms of, you know, how they're, how they're using their time? Is there a trade off? Because there's data that needs to be, I think, deleted every seven days, and some probably maintenance, things like that. So what, what do you anticipate that to be like?
Sure, that's a good question. So the data is all going to be taken care of by the evidence.com, through the licensing fees that we're paying for. Anything submitted is automatically going to the cloud, and it's going to be put on that retention cycle, so we won't have to go into any of the files or recordings. It just is automatically deleted after seven days, so there won't be any additional time there. When it comes to training, it's an online pilot training program. I think it's about an average of 14 hours. Officers who are going to become pilots will be able to complete that on duty, so that's not going to come with additional overtime costs. Might take them a little while, but they'll be able to knock them out while they're on shift, but likely will benefit mentally from having the breaks in a couple days of going through an online 14-hour course, so that won't be an added expenditure for, for training time. As far as maintenance, yeah, that can also definitely be done on duty. It's not going to be any additional overtime costs associated with, with maintenance. There might be, I mean, if we're in a larger scale situation where we happen to not have a drone pilot on, there could be the case of where I'm calling in somebody from the drone team, because we, we need the drone for whatever the incident is. So just due to the, the training that anybody on the drone team is going to, going to be able to provide us, they may be asked to come in if we, we need the drone for an incident.
That's right, thank you. And then I just have one last comment in regards to the different rules that were laid out in the state statute, and I think it was number six, to collect information from a public area if there is reasonable criminal activity.
Sure.
And so I, it would be helpful if there was a little bit more, like, explanation of what that, or what parameters are around that, because it seems a little bit vague to me.
I, I agree with you, and that is, you know, that's the word of the state statute, so we didn't, we didn't alter that one bit. We adopted that language because that, in our own policy, because that's how it came from the state. But that one is confusing, but my own thoughts on, let me try to pull up that slide. So you're talking about number six, to collect information from a public area if there's reasonable suspicion of criminal activity. An example that Sergeant Badewich and I had thought of for this one, because this was also one of the questions that a member of the public had asked me about, and the example we thought of is if there is a handful of stolen cars being dumped in a public park, it would definitely help our ability to get some information on the suspects, or suspect who is responsible for doing the stolen car leaving at this park. If we could have a drone getting the information, instead of a Mark squad car in the parking lot is not going to, someone's probably not going to drop off another stolen car right next to a Mark squad car in the parking lot. But if they don't know there's a drone flying over their head as they're leaving a stolen car in the same parking lot in a public area, and we're able to get that license plate and ID the driver after they leave the car and then walk away from the car, hopefully we can ID them and then make an arrest based on that. So that's, that's one example. It is a vague reason for, that's listed in the, in the state statute, but that's, that's one thing, one example I can see for that use.
Yeah, thank you for that example. That's helpful. I would say on the city level, I know state statute tends to be the, kind of, the baseline for the law, but I think looking at it from a city level, to have a little bit more, have that a little bit more flushed out on a, would be helpful.
Do you want us to change the state statute, or?
To, to make additional policies in regards to the state statute. So like, to flush out that state statute a little bit more, because state statute is kind of the floor, I would say, of the law, and so when we come to the city level, it would be helpful to kind of outline a little bit further and flush out some of the language to clarify to our residents the reasons.
I mean, I'm open for comments or recommendations on how our policy, as, as we have created, might be changed. I'm just not sure the direction you're intending with the, any verbiage on more restrictive than state statute allows.
I think it's just maybe clarifying, you know, or defining maybe what you, what you mean by reasonable suspicion or criminal activity, just so it adds, makes it more specific, because we were saying it was vague. So having it a little bit more specific can be helpful.
Yeah, I also, I'm just concerned about limiting our ability. If we do run into, you know, let's say we listed stolen car there, and then it happens to be meth sales happening in this parking lot, then well, you know, we didn't list meth sales, and now we can't fly the drone to try to catch the meth sales going on. So I think if we try to limit it or restrict this policy, or the language of this policy anymore, it would, it would deter our ability to properly utilize it in, in certain situations.
I can just interrupt here, and I think what Councilmember Wong is, is saying is that, you know, we're obligated as a city to follow the minimum requirements that are set forth in the state statutes, and, you know, we, we can't be less restrictive than what they're saying, but we certainly can be more restrictive. But I think maybe her concern is, and what I was going to propose is that, you know, this is, obviously it's new. I look at this as it's a, it's a tool that you're going to use, just like all the other tools that you have in the back of your squad car. And, you know, now that we're on that subject, now I can see we have the council elects here and the mayor-elect. I hope that you guys take the police department up on their offer for ride-alongs, and I think you can learn a lot from that. But it's new, and there's, obviously, anything new, there's questions and concerns, and it's our responsibility to, you know, provide tools for residents to be aware and educated. So I don't know if this is up on our website yet, but I think it'd probably make a lot of sense to put this presentation, you just gave the PowerPoint, a link onto the website, so people, you can easily direct them to that, rather than telling them, well, go to this council meeting and try to scroll through in the agenda and find it. And also too, I think, to address some of Councilmember Wong's concerns is, a lot of times, you know, if you're buying a product online, there'll be a Q and A or FAQ section, maybe adding to that to kind of give some examples, like what we just discussed here tonight, you know, frequently asked questions about this particular item, you know, because it is vague, and I, I think, you know, there's reasons why there's vagueness, you know, to, like you say, to, to list every single specific instance where you would deploy the drone to meet that criteria. If you don't list every single one, which is impossible to do, then the attorneys can tear you apart in court because you failed to do that. So it's probably by design that it's a little vague, but to give examples of this is how we, here's a scenario, this is how we would address it, might be helpful. I mean, I don't know if that's where she was going with that, but, and I think, you know, over time, you know, like you said, this is new, we're going to have more specific instances to say, well, this is how we're using the drone. I think when the first, when you first brought this topic up, there was a question or comment about, well, so are you going to be flying these up and down the street? You know, obviously not, you know, that's not, we're not looking to replace patrol officers with this, and, and it's not allowed by state statute. So there's just going to be a learning curve, and I think getting this stuff on the website, linking it to social media, having these learning opportunities at, at community events like the car show to demonstrate, you know. And then one other question I just had, does Oakdale and Maplewood, do they have drones? Are you aware of that, or maybe you can't answer that?
They're, I don't believe so. I know that, I think Maplewood is, is working on it, New Brighton's working on it, Roseville does have them, Ramsey County Sheriff's Office does have them, so other agencies and cities are.
And so now that we have them, there's also the potential that other agencies might request them to be used, like if Maplewood has a search and rescue, and they know we have a drone with that thermal capability, they could potentially request mutual aid from us to, to come out and use the drone, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. And just out of, you know, time at 6:25, didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember Wong, but I just wanted to get that question there, so.
Councilmember Wong?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I would definitely agree with Councilmember Thorson in terms of public education around, around this. I think that, you know, it's also another opportunity, as you had mentioned, to reach out to the community and build relationships. I, I would still like to kind of explore to what degree too specific is, sorry, let me start that again. I would be interested to explore language that may be a little bit more specific, but not very specific, that it's limiting, extremely limiting, but to have a little bit more clarity, but something for us to maybe discuss at another time since we're about to finish. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anything else? We're running short of time here. What I'd like to do possibly is put the workshop on recess right now and start after the general meeting is over. Is that possible?
Yeah, you guys are just a lot of fun for some good procedural questions, but yeah, that's, that is appropriate. I guess I would suggest, I don't know if recess is the right word, I, I would suggest tabling these last two points to pick up after, to pick up the workshop after the.
What's that term called?
To table.
To table.
Until after the city council meeting.
Is it okay with the council if we table up until after the meeting, we'll finish workshop, as long as, Dan, are you willing to stay till after the meeting to finish up the workshop? Okay, because I want to give you time too. It's, and I don't want to, I know you cannot say it in three minutes.
Well, you had four minutes, and now you're down to three. Could at least gave them a shot.
So we'll adjourn and then take up the workshop after the general meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Always good to hear what's going on in the police department, but I wish we had better, more positive coming to us, but that's the way it is today, so. But thank you, and I think we're going to, let's.
Mayor, can you, let's go ahead and do the recess plan.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Motion to recess?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, motion to recess, Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries, and then Brandy, we're going to take care of you.